All right, we're ready to go.
Okay. Just welcome everybody to the school committee meeting. Sorry about the delay. We had the press conference plus a couple of technical difficulties. Now, so I'm gonna call the, I'm gonna call the meeting for auto and do a roll call at the same time.
Ms. Biancaria?
Here.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Monfrido?
Here.
Ms. Novick?
Here.
And Mayor Petty?
Here.
Okay, approve the records. Consider you approved the minutes of the school committee meeting on Thursday, July 16, on July 20th, and also on Wednesday, July 22nd and Wednesday, July 29th, school meeting. So collectively on the roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Mrs. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. So we are... Next is the end of cycle summative evaluation by the school committee. Anybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so as people know that we have a summative evaluation. We have all the school committees through their evaluations, and I tried to summarize them the best I could. So if I miss something, I think you're allowed to speak after, if you have to. But I try to collect everybody into what?
Summarize.
So I'll go over the summative, then if people want to speak after that, you don't have to, because I think the summative is the evaluation. Okay. Andrew, can we put up, can we do the slide?
Hi, Andrew, do you want to do it in presentation mode?
Yeah, no, this is perfect. Just go on to the next.
Okay. Andrew, can you go to the next slide?
Can anybody see?
Yeah, I think you, you gotta share your screen like you were before, Andrew.
Who's that?
Andrew.
Second.
So give Andrew a second. I think you gotta share your screen like you did before, Andrew. We're not seeing the slideshow. So there you go. All right. Good. All right, there you go.
So this is the assessment analysis, which is two. Information of the plan is three. Four was the mid-cycle goal review. Five is today's summative evaluation. So, next slide. Okay. Who's the educated average system based on the ratings with six spots, specific measurable attainable relevant to family goals? First one is student learning goal. By June 2020, update utilizes of high-quality teaching and learning framework to align these academic relevance and rigor across all grades. You're taking the net, you're going to the net. This is plenty of significant progress. Mr. Foley, net. Ms. McCullough, net. Mr. Phil, net. Mrs. Novick, some progress. Okay, next, so we have, okay. Next slide is professional practice goal. By June 20th, by June 2020, implement a comprehensive district-wide approach to monitoring measures and improving student math outcomes. You have paid significant progress. Mr. Bean here is significant progress. This is plenty of some progress. Mr. Foley, significant progress. Ms. McCullough, significant progress. Mark Fredo, net. Mrs. Novick, some progress. Okay, professional practice goal, one net, four significant progress, and two some progress. Okay, District One Improvement Goal. By June 2020, implementing district technology strategy that prioritizes support student learning achievement, increasing digital quality skills of student staff and district administration. They're paying that, that, this is plenty of significant progress. Mr. Foley, significant progress. Mr. Paul, net. Mr. Phil, net. Mrs. Novick, did not meet. And we have one, let's see, one format, okay, four net, two significant progress, and one do not meet. District Improvement Goal, two. By June 20, identifying commitment strategies for social emotional learning and impact esteem performance measure. They're paying that, that. Mrs. Clancy, significant progress. Mr. Foley, some progress. Mr. Paul, significant progress. Mr. Mark Fredo, net. And Mrs. Novick, some progress. So we had three met, two significant progress, and two some progress. Okay, District Three. By June 20, develop a plan for improvement retention, implement strategies that will increase access to well-qualified diverse candidates. You have paid some progress. Mr. Bean here is significant progress. This is plenty of some progress. Mr. Foley, some progress. Mrs. McCullough, significant progress. Mr. Mark Fredo, significant progress. Mrs. Novick, did not meet. So we had three significant progress, three some progress, and one do not meet. Okay. District Improvement Goal, four. By 2020, support the problem of best of the learning opportunities for students to develop intellectual agility, ability to think and act well, social activity, and personal ease, easy to see, to go to know yourself, and capacity to act with. This is the end. This is the net. Mr. Bean here is exceeded. This is plenty of significant progress. Mr. Foley, significant progress. Mr. Paul, net. Mr. Phil, net. Mrs. Novick, some progress. So one exceeded, three met, two significant progress, and one some progress. Deposit rating for six mark goals, one exceed, this is net, four through significant progress, nine some progress, and two do not meet. Next slide. Okay. Individual ratings and assessment progress for the goals, professional practice. Matt, this is plenty of net. This is plenty of net. Mr. Foley, significant progress. Matt. Mr. Mark Fredo, net. This is Novick, some progress. Student learning, significant progress. Mayor Petty, this is plenty of area, significant progress. This is plenty of significant progress. Mr. Foley, net. This is plenty of significant progress. This is, this is Novick, some progress. District Improvement Goals. Mayor Petty, significant progress. Mr. Bean here, significant progress. Mrs. Clancy, significant progress. Mr. Foley, some progress. Mrs. McCullough, significant progress. Mr. Mark Fredo, net. And Mrs. Novick, did not meet. Deposit rating, zero exceeded, seven net, ten significant progress, three some progress, and one do not meet. Okay, next slide. There are four standards of effective professional practice, which are rated at four levels of performance. Unsatisfactory needs improvement, proficient exemplary is shown below. Social standing instructional leadership. Mayor Petty, proficient. This is plenty of area, proficient. This is plenty of proficient. Mr. Foley, proficient. Mr. McCullough, proficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, proficient. Mr. Novick, unsatisfactory. Instruction one D. Mayor Petty, proficient. This being here, proficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, needs improvement. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. Mr. Novick, unsatisfactory. One C, proficient. This is plenty of efficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, proficient. Mr. McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. This is plenty of satisfactory. One D. Mr. Paul, efficient. This being area, proficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, proficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. This is plenty of improvement. Data reform decision-making. Mayor Petty, he's improvement. This being area, proficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, needs improvement. This is plenty of improvement. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Uh, next slide. In one instruction leadership, deposit exemplary zero, proficient point six, five, and three unsatisfactory. Okay, instructional leadership. This is a form of departments. Superintendent has done a fine job of identifying problems like bilingual certification, when they confuse bill reachers, while direct around continuing advanced placement expansion. That's by myself. Next comment. Utilize multi, I think we're all sort of, yeah. Utilize multi sources of data to inform our school district, school committee, and stakeholders regarding progress of our school district and address issues, best data input and view. Area. Mexican for more Clancy. Superintendent Benanda has done a good job to inform the district staff, which supports that has been able to work together to ensure that we have set standards to reflect high on instruction leaders of students and personalize teaching styles that may be diverse in the population. That's Clancy. Mr. Foley, the school committee, the public does not see enough student achievement data. This is long, long timeline showing important trends in the area. Foley. Next. Continue to evaluate principal administration, sure appropriate supports are being provided throughout the district. Paul. Mr. Mark Fredo, Superintendent Benanda has expanded college opportunities at the high school level, supporting AP capstone. Please, please, I think testing. Implementation of the SEAL by military program. Addition under her leadership, chronic absenteeism has been reduced as well as suspension. This, Dr. Novick, functional administration, the education of 25,000 students, and the second life in the city is scattered, moving from one thing to the next, without a little sense of prioritization and delegation. This year, was of course a difference to everyone, but I appreciate the ability of administration to adapt to change circumstances and keep families and staff in form, especially in the last few months. That's myself. Area. This is instructional leadership, again, continue. Going to be working with district leaders to develop multi-learning plans for our school district to overcome challenges, ensuring positive growth and development. This is plenty of area. Mr. Foley, many school departments continue to struggle academically. Schools way higher. Level of success before the expectation present in the school opportunity app, recognition of how to use new to new funds to accomplish objective. This is McCullough. We'd like to see more utilization, implementation of district-related data and appropriate. Superintendent Benanda worked closely with UMass Medical School, Horizon, Greater Winston Community Foundation, Seuss, officials, with the research bureau, and led a way to provide funding for connectivity via Hotbox, write updates, which will translate in seven languages, influence staff and families, their academic versus connect ed, emails, texts, website, newsletters, and social media. That's Mr. Mark Fredo. Next. This standard calls listeners instructional leadership, continue. This standard calls for effective and rigorous, standard-based units, well-stricken lessons, measurable outcomes. Superintendent is to ensure all staff design. There's no evidence given by Superintendent Nenda in self-evaluation, this indicator, this is Novick. Mayor Petty, as we discussed instructional leadership, we need to recognize that in our increasingly aware world, no false decisions should be made by the administration without considering through the lens of equity. Every organization of any size, but the guide is asking itself the same questions about how they can adapt to change in social justice landscape, and how they can be best expressed in internal and external policy. That's myself. This being area. COVID-19 leadership team comprised of the mayor, the superintendent, superintendent has developed immediately informed, weighted stakeholders in the community regarding multi-issues and concerns by holding daily press conferences and conference calls and press conferences to discuss and review school programs, academic progress, city health priorities, support programs, and nutrition programs. That's by, uh, this being here. The next one. Mr. Mark Fredo, Superintendent Benanda is good at communicating with all staff members. He's driving the best practice in professional development. Mrs. Novick, one of the most probably aspects of self-evaluations, the lack of data, backing assertions. It has as well been ongoing concerns raised by the community of the lack of data access. Multiple sorts of evidence are being used to improve organizational performance and their effectiveness. Student learning is not in evidence in Superintendent Benanda's self-evaluation. This is a weakness in the presentations of the administration. That's by Mrs. Novick. Next slide. Okay, standard two. Individual ratings. Two A, the environment, which is being here exemplary. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, efficient. Mrs. McCullough, efficient. This is Mark Fredo, efficient. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Next one, student resource management development. Mayor Petty needs improvement. This is plenty of area, efficient. This is Clancy. This is plenty of need improvement. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough needs improvement. Mr. Mark Fredo, proficient. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Next one is two C, scheduling and measured information systems. Mayor Petty, efficient. This being here exemplary. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley, efficient. This is McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. This is Novick, needs improvement. Boy ethics and policies. Mayor Petty, efficient. This is plenty of efficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, efficient. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Next is fiscal systems. Two E, Mayor Petty, proficient. This being here exemplary. This is Clancy, efficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, exemplary. This is Novick, needs improvement. Our next slide. Standard two, management operations, deposit rating, four exemplary, four efficient, eight needs improvement, three unsatisfactory. Okay, these are requirements in standard two, management operation. This is by myself. The load superintendent, the active best system. Can't read this. The load superintendent is acting best system, managing issues that confronted as a whole, not the individual fires that individually arise and dealing basis outside. Would like to see the superintendent focus on long-term strategic issues. Let's see, next is by this being area. Other citywide community Zoom forms to review recognition of our school district under the school opportunity app plan to respond to numerous questions and concerns. Next is Mrs. Clancy. Superintendent Benanda confused the by-oversight of the district to create a safe, efficient, effective learning environment. Mr. Foley, there are a few very concerning issues in this capacity that cause me great concern. First being, being the bidding process, open letter warning of the transportation contract. The bidding process would be described as intent to mitigate the process, raise serious questions about ethics and policies. Next slide. Management operations. Worker three, what delicious state university, while only first hiring, overall recruitment and hiring in general. That's Ms. McCullough. Next is by Mr. Mark Fredo. Superintendent Benanda teamed up with Dr. Martin Peep and Dr. I can't see, Sarada, Sarada, I can't hear him, to develop the importance of equity and rigor for classrooms, well culturally responsive practices. Next is Mrs. Novick. Focus and delegation are absolutely necessary in any school district, but most especially when it was this size. Instead, it was not going to prioritize centralized administration is in the weeds all the time. Experience of many in central administration, per compounds, this lack of realization and delegation. Okay. Okay, Mayor Petty, administration needs to experience new management with qualified individuals to make sure the superintendent is not a sole decision maker or crisis manager or crisis manager. We need to be evaluating employees through the administration, elevating, sorry, elevating employees from administration ladder, investing in professional development, so they can take on more responsibility about superintendent, the time, space, and bandwidth to, uh, really, really about next steps to adjust systematic issue, systemic issues that we face. And, and area. Work with the, uh, work with the school district leadership to develop a state-of-the-art program to vet safety incidents in our schools, hours training, work, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And this is Clancy. The school district continues to be underfunded, even with budget constraints, they have to do, do initiatives, develop, ensure the school can value strong education experience. That's by, uh, Clancy. Our next, uh... Next is, uh, management operations continue. Question whether the district has developed a cohesive, intentional plan to diversify the workforce of the schools beyond the evaluation of instructional assistance. Mr. Foley. Mrs. McCullough, need to focus on involvement and retention. Mr. Mark Fredo, Superintendent Benanda continues to work with Dr. Heather Forky, Director of the UMass Tram Team, in the training of principals and adjustment counselors on SEL services for students. That's Mr. Mark Fredo. Next is by Miss Novick. One that once during my time on the committee, one that once during my time on the committee, District Board Council has been listed to buttress the superintendent's arguments against the pervium violation of the council's actual under throwing to school committee. That was Miss Novick. Next is Mayor Petty. Next year, the superintendent should hire a communication man to serve as a spokesperson for the district, while they continue building a large communication department to serve additional and social media needs for the community. This being area. This is also continued for management operations. Collaborate with the school committee, the mayor, city manager, discuss the fiscal 21 budget and focus on equity access to the system, across the system. This is being area. Mrs. Clancy, the administration is doing a great job providing great growth opportunities for our staff. We'd like to see an expanded employee recruitment plan, build free-saw candidate pool of highly qualified diverse employees. Mr. Foley, I will note the inability of the district to provide phone books and timely management schools about technology, given the nature of the pandemic and the loss of education time. It is imperative that we provide technology for our students. And to be, this is Molly McCullough, work to ensure the school community policies are adhered to regarding how some items are first placed on the regular agenda, then refer to standing committee for discussion prior to approval. That was Miss McCullough. This is standard two. Management operations can continue. This is Dr. Mark Fredo. Superintendent Benanda proposed a 2021 budget that was approved by the school committee, supported this expedition involved, highly achieve diversity of, to recruit extraordinary candidates, petition positions in Worcester Public Schools. Uh, Mrs. Novick, committee has expected to approve the allocation of 9.4 million federal CARES Act funding based on spreadsheet, lacking detail, and a list of items about explanation, attached in dorm logs, ministry's directory guide. Those managing grants are funded in their charge, as well as the oversight of those funds. That's Miss Novick. Okay. Now we're going to standard three, family community engagement. Mayor Petty, this is three A, which is engagement. Mayor Petty, proficient. This is plenty of efficient. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, exemplary. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Share responsibility. Mayor Petty, this improvement. This is plenty of area, exemplary. This is plenty of efficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough, efficient. Mr. Mark Fredo, exemplary. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Okay, communications needs improvement. This being area, proficient. Mrs. Clancy, proficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough, needs improvement. Mr. Mark Fredo, exemplary. This is Novick, unsatisfactory. Family concerns. Mayor Petty, proficient. This being here, proficient. This is plenty of need improvement. Mr. Foley needs improvement. This is McCullough, needs improvement. Mr. Mark Fredo, exemplary. And Mrs. Novick, unsatisfactory. Okay, so deposit ratings, exemplary is five, proficient is 10, this is 9, and satisfactory is four. Okay. Okay, these are the requirements, family community engagement. This is mine. Superintendent keeps the public schedule as truly thoughtful and exhausting. However, I'm in macro level one. I'd like to see the superintendent to focus on learning, how to address issues of racial, ethnic equity appropriately. This being area. Develop the welcoming committee into each of our school sites, enhance representation at each school by supporting our students and staff, and expand innovative pathways for community members as advisors. That's this being area. For Clancy, the district has created different ways to communicate with families, especially during the school shutdown. Somebody's included ways of families updating contact information. So you're going to see updated information, phone calls, and emails. That's Mrs. Clancy. Next slide. Jack Foley, legitimate questions raised regarding regional equity, institutional bias, and student achievement in our district unfortunately resulted in conflict. Dr. Molly, a general conversation is needed. Molly McCullough, I recognize the work that I've done to improve the family community engagement standard. Mr. Mark Fredo, Superintendent Benanda has expanded the role of ESL with many parents of all nationalities participating, work well, citywide parent advisory council, mental leaders month. That's Mr. Fredo. Next. For our fans here, can we have a grab a water? Okay, Mrs. Novick, this is Novick. Administration must refrain, refrain its picture of the families, of the families Worcester, nearly 60% of families speaking language at home that is not English. Now, families represented in multiple, multiplicity of cultures, races, ethnicity. There's not enough to post as a static around webs, as a stats, as a statistics on this slide. We must frame all that we do in that context. Mayor Petty, the committee provides pointed, concerted, constructive criticism. It is the role of superintendent to receive this input in a receptive manner, weigh it on its merits, and gap accordingly. I refer that the superintendent receive thoughts and suggestions from students and parents in the more constructive way of manner. Uh, this being area. Support the students, community members, and staff who have recommendations for increase of mental health counselors and school adjustment counselors. That was this being here. Our next, uh... This is from Mrs. Clancy. District administration anticipate school community public forums focusing on updates in 2021 calendar school year, which were very successful and very important part engaging our families in the community. This is Clancy. Mr. Foley, I have concerns also regarding the district's willingness to truly partner with community groups and share the process of helping our students and our staff be successful. Too many times we hear about the community groups being left out of process and discussions, and you could assist the district tremendously. Mr. Foley. Molly McCullough, I do not believe that there is more that we can do, but I do not believe that there is more that we can do, but... But also recognize that there's been a significant amount of work that has gone on from past, past months. So, yep, next. Uh, Mr. Mark Fredo, Superintendent Benanda has attended meetings both year with high education and businesses, and has also established a strong partnership within the community and many social agencies and corporate establishments. That was from Mr. Mark Fredo. Uh, Mrs. Novick, two-way communications powerful in the standard opportunities to communicate, talk back to the district, and share concerns, ask for assistance, express opinions, to reshape the future of the district, elementally few. Okay, next. Okay, school committee. Just want to make sure everybody's looking at me right.
Yes, we can.
There are numerous organizations that want to work with Worcester Public Schools to help assist in the mission of educating and enriching the life of our students. Administrator such as you needs to be judicious on which organization that is serving the district best. Mayor Petty, uh, this being area, address child spectrum, connectivity issues with the man, the student manager, whose family impacted the whole online learning, approximately 22% of Worcester household, ensure nutrition... Approximately twenty-two percent of Worcester household ensure nutrition for students and community members of over twenty sites throughout the city. This is Clancy, that was Miss Being Carrier, I'm sorry. And next is Mrs. Clancy. I believe we can do better in addressing family, community issues. I continually hear from community members and families that have concerns with the district. We need to continue to work with the stakeholders, ensure that all families feel supported. Uh, okay, next. This is from Jack Foley. Took over a year to address the issues raised by the homeschool parents looking for parity on the district's ability authorized by homeschool requests. That's Jack Foley. Ms. McCullough, nobody could have predicted that we would be in the midst of a pandemic. We have done a great deal to improve working with the families and community groups. Ms. McCullough, Mr. Montfredo. Superintendent's time commitment has been exemplary, which does it with enthusiasm and caring attitude. He's a leader who motivates others, is a good listener, and is skillful communicator. That's Mr. Montfredo. Ms. Novick, family, community concerns for a standard ought to be addressed in equitable, effective, efficient manner. This is simply not the case. Language, race, ethnicity, various kinds of access all have a great deal to do with how concerns are resolved. That's Ms. Novick. And next. Okay, this is professional culture. Okay, uh, she is for a, uh, commitment to high standards. Mia Petty, proficient. This being Carrier, exemplary. This is proficient. Mr. Foley, proficient. Ms. McCullough, proficient. Mr. Montfredo, exemplary. Ms. Novick, unsatisfactory. Cultural proficiency. Mia Petty, proficient. This, Carrier, this being Carrier, proficient. Mrs. Clancy needs improvement. Mr. Foley needs improvement. Uh, Ms. McCullough needs improvement. Mr. Montfredo, proficient. Ms. Novick, unsatisfactory. Uh, next one's communication. Mia Petty needs improvement. Uh, this, this being Carrier, proficient. This is Clancy, proficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. Ms. McCullough, needs improvement. Mr. Montfredo, exemplary. And Ms. Novick, unsatisfactory. Next is continuous wording. Mia Petty, proficient. This being Carrier, proficient. This is clearly proficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. Ms. McCullough, proficient. Mr. Montfredo, exemplary. Ms. Novick, unsatisfactory. Shared vision. Mia Petty needs improvement. This being Carrier, proficient. This is clearly proficient. Mr. Foley needs improvement. Ms. McCullough, proficient. Mr. Montfredo, proficient. Ms. Novick, unsatisfactory. Uh, next is managing conflict. Mia Petty, proficient. This being Carrier, proficient. Mrs. Clancy needs improvement. Uh, Mr. Foley needs improvement. Ms. McCullough needs improvement. Mr. Montfredo, Mr. Montfredo, uh, proficient. Ms. Novick is, uh, Ms. Novick is unsatisfied. Okay, next. We had four exemplary, twenty proficient, twelve needs improvement, six unsatisfactory. Uh, these are comments, but standard four, while superintendent is truly capable, capable. I'd like to see her continue to improve her ability to express the goals and themes of leadership in Worcester Public Schools as a whole. That's Mia Petty. Uh, this being Carrier, with standard access to create technical education, educational partnership, innovation pathways, which reflect the stakeholders and local labor priorities. Next is Laura Clancy. Superintendent Penander has set a high expectation for our staff to pursue a high-quality education for our students. During the shutdown, the superintendent held meetings for administration, keeping them informed, updating what is happening in the community, school district expectations, but didn't learn. That was Laura Clancy. Jack Foley, I will highlight concerns with the cultural proficiency component. Although I would acknowledge some movement over the past year, the district needs to significantly ramp up its professional development and awareness of this issue. Okay. Molly McCallum, I believe that the cultural proficiency, communication, managing conflict are areas that, that we can continue to improve on. However, I do not believe that many steps have been made in the right direction. I do believe that many steps have been made in the right direction. That's Molly McCallum. John Montfredo, Superintendent Penander opened the school year with a gathering with the DCU staff to set the tone next through year by bringing all staff members together by delivering the message that we are all in this together. Ms. Novick, the commitment to high standards, continuous wording is invalid. It must be followed by the superintendent. In Worcester Public Schools, it is not. Professional wording of the superintendent, more of improving one's professional practice, is no air of evidence presented to the committee. That's Ms. Novick. Next, uh, this is, uh, continue. The culture is built upon what is said in private, public, newspaper, and breaking. The question that needs to be asked is what is the story of the Worcester Public Schools at this point in time? Where are we going and how are we getting there? Which is the story we are telling collectively to our students, our teachers, our parents, our city, and a large statewide community? Before we discuss how we should do, to do so, we need to craft an inclusive vision of the Worcester Public Schools, which everyone can partake. Mia Petty, this being Carrier, develop a limited comprehensive bullying program for students and staff, including cyberbullying, hiring drug educators of students who are at risk of substance abuse. Uh, Laura Clancy, in the future, I'd like to see continued, clear, and consistent communication with the staff, families, and partners, especially when it comes to planning. Let me just do that again. In the future, I'd like to see continued, clear, consistent communication with the staff, families, and partners, especially when it comes to planning. Due to the continued pandemic, concerns around opening our school. That was from Laura Clancy. The self-concerns of the district. Um, next. I note that the section of, this is also professional culture. This is from Jack Foley. I know the section for managing conflict with the approach of the superintendent to offer is confrontational and not de-escalating. In the public arena, it is incumbent on all of us to engage in thoughtful, professional, and genuine dialogue to move towards a productive and endgame. Okay, this is Molly McCallum. I do feel confident my strength on the four A, four D, and four E, or four traditional work on four A. Okay, next is Superintendent Penander is a leader who uses my example for professionalism by working with staff and strong staff development program. That was by, uh, John Montfredo. Okay. This is, I'm sorry about this. My screen's cut off a little bit, so I can just go to the paper here. This is by Ms. Novick. Now, then engage in implicit bias work requested by the community, vital and bearing effective educator for Worcester students. The superintendent has resisted and reflected into our other sorts of training throughout the district, frequently addressing our families from a deficit mindset rather than one which recognizes the strengths and knowledge families brings to schools and their students. Okay, next page. This is also professional culture. All of this, along with achievements, daily miracles that occur in our classroom every day end up with a legacy both for the superintendent as well as the elected officials that are charged with holding for account. This being Carrier, held several training sessions to share the vision of the district by the known renowned presenters on educational practice, which included cultural early literacy, pointers in panel program, resilience in practices, and culturally responsive and racism training. That's this being Carrier. Laura Clancy. I would like to see our superintendent place a focus particularly around managing conflict by building relations, relationships with staff, particularly teachers. While some aspects of the shutdown were not in the superintendent's control, there have been times that the staff have not felt appreciated or felt that they're concerned with being heard. That was Mrs. Clancy. Okay, next is Jack Foley. In many ways, this theater is one that wish the superintendents, which superintendents are judged, and there are opportunities here for improvement. Next is John Montfredo. The third administrative team, Superintendent Penander has developed through collaboration with the district stakeholders, supportive of graduate framework, which goal is to build a strength-based leadership model that will support implementation and ongoing improvement in the district. This program will permit staff to post monitor students when they are on or off track with graduation and post-secondary success. That's Mr. Montfredo. Ms. Novick, we have a responsibility to hear and believe children. We have a responsibility of working with families. Too often, Worcester Public Schools do not. Okay, this is an assessment of performance on the standards. We first have standard one, instructional leadership. Mia Petty is proficient. Mia being Carrier, proficient. Laura Clancy, proficient. Jack Foley, proficient. Molly McCallum, proficient. John Montfredo, proficient. Tracy Novick, Novick needs improvement. Standard two, management operations. Mia Petty, proficient. Mia being Carrier, exemplary. Laura Clancy, proficient. Jack Foley needs improvement. Molly McCallum, proficient. John Montfredo, proficient. Tracy Novick, unsatisfactory. Standard three, family and community engagement. Mia Petty, proficient. Mia being Carrier, proficient. Laura Clancy, proficient. Jack Foley needs improvement. Molly McCallum needs improvement. John Montfredo, exemplary. Tracy Novick, unsatisfactory. Standard four, professional culture. Uh, Mia Petty, proficient. Mia being Carrier, proficient. Laura Clancy, proficient. Jack Foley needs improvement. Molly McCallum, proficient. John Montfredo, exemplary. Tracy Novick, unsatisfactory. That gives us, uh, three exemplary, seven need improvement, three unsatisfactory. The overall summative evaluation on the goals and standards. Mia Petty, proficient. Mia being Carrier, proficient. Laura Clancy, proficient. Jack Foley needs improvement. Molly McCallum, proficient. John Montfredo, proficient. Tracy Novick, unsatisfactory. Zero exemplary, five proficient, one needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. Okay, evaluated comments, school committee comments. This is for myself. Amid a worldwide pandemic, I believe the superintendent Penander has performed efficiently. Mainly, she has had her best in crisis, much resources, we like staff materials to work in hand with the administration and our community. Mia and being Carrier, worked with the mayor, city manager, health department, the safe, the safety director of the school committee with input from the community stakeholders to support our students, staff, and community. That was this being Carrier. This is Clancy. Uh, since my start in the school committee, I've seen a significant improvement in terms of community, speaking, community partners, and trust of insurance in the district. Next. This is from Jack Foley. Superintendent Penander has committed her wife to the work of Worcester Public Schools. I also note that the current plan to reopen the Worcester Public Schools, the gravity and nature of this effort, in communication with all parties, including the members of the school committee, has been exemplary. The continuation is inclusive, strategic planning will address many of my critiques of the past year. That was Mr. Foley. Uh, Ms. McCullough, I believe we continue to work on communication with the community as well as with our staff. I'm impressed with the progress we have made, including outreach, translations, and important messages. I know that much of this has been done through very challenging times. That's Ms. McCullough. Mr. Montfredo, Superintendent Penander has continued to set the tone, opening a school by bringing all professional and non-professional staff members together to engage in a well-planned program and set the stage for a new school year. Okay, next page. Okay. The two overriding themes that arise again and again is evaluation by the lack of capacity, administration of district aspects, from roles to ethics, leadership, professional learning, and the perpet- perpetration. In the per- perpetration of the district climate of staff, students that too frequently silencing, fearful, discouraging, rather robber, nurturing, nurturing, and supportive. That was by Ms. Novick. Mia Petty, work with me, the city manager's team, and the community, the Worcester Public Schools have accelerated a three, five-year plan with the vice in the hands of every household in around two months. That's five thousand wifi hotspots that occurred with the help of this team in Horizon. This being Carrier, expanded chapter seventy-four courses, with additional courses in part, in part hence at High, Worcester Temple High School. I'm sorry, part of the high schools, Worcester Temple High Schools. And, uh, next is Laura Clancy. Superintendent ran community meetings to guide the Fighting of Student Opportunity Act, engage with community partners to address concerns that expressed last year. That's Laura Clancy. Next page. This is Jack Foley. Uh, we need to drive the strategic pathway to the schools, bringing families, students, community groups, in business and civic leadership, with a strong partnership, where every voice is heard and valued. This has not been the case in Worcester, with community members and groups not feeling part of the process and questions raised around the lack of collaboration. That's Mr. Foley. Ms. McCullough, cultural proficiency is something we continue to work on. We have a great base to build on. I'd like to see more consistent communication going out to staff, system-wide, and often at staff with plans in place. These areas will be much closer to proficient in the near future. That was Ms. McCullough. Mr. Montfredo, Superintendent Penander has encouraged instructional assistants who are interested in burning the education, become teachers, are offering opportunities to receive teacher degrees at Worcester State University. Mia Petty, the fourteen-point equity that the superintendent agreed to be judged on, she has made real substantial progress. But most people do not understand and know the work that has been done, the work is being done, but the community is unaware of it. The employees in health is effective leadership. Uh, Mia and being Carrier, exemplified strong leadership qualities and cooperation with staff to construct a new South High Community School. Next is Mrs. Clancy. That was Miss Being Carrier. Next is Mrs. Clancy. As the school year ended, the district planned for summer school in the twenty-twenty-one school year, the superintendent was able to acknowledge that we have struggled. This acknowledgement made a significant impact on the progress that she and the team accomplished. Make sure we have well-developed the opening plan for our return to the school for twenty-twenty-one school year. That's Mrs. Clancy. This is, uh, Jack Foley. The superintendent's summary of the past year, a very good data on student achievement, with no trending information. Need to keep this information publicly in front of us, for those all, and we should be judged by the rise or decline of that student achievement data. Foley, Ms. McCullough, I'd like to see a more formalized and robust process for internal and teacher administrative conflicts. They have put emphasis on zero college, or the retaliation and attribution. That's Ms. McCullough. Mr. Montfredo, uh, the superintendent's commitment is truly outstanding, exemplified by helping the families out at his attic on Saturday morning, bringing cheer for our immigrants at various uh, community functions, as adult learning events, bringing food to the homeless families in need, attending student support events, as special education programs at the school. That's Mr. Montfredo. And this is mine. Now is the time to rethink the way in which we are educating our children and as we try to reinvent how exactly that's being done. We should look into how we can use the crisis to create opportunities in the future. I have a behalf to school, the school committee would like to thank superintendent Benetta for her tremendous personal commitment to assist our schools. Look forward to working for our management team, my colleagues, as we seek to make this the best schools in the best districts in the country. I think that brings us to the end of someone with a cumulative evaluation. Any school committees want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Mr. Mark.
Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice job of putting it all together. And, and again, this evaluation certainly was followed by Superintendent Benetta. Again, she has continued to be, do a great job on moving our system forward and has stepped up with a team to deal with this endemic crisis as well. Her commitment to education and to the community has been ongoing, so she's continued to be a strong, committed leader and has moved our system forward to the next level. She's a person and she's a leader who motivates others, a good listener and a skillful communicator. The time commitment has been exemplary and I just want to, again, wish her every best that she moves forward. Congratulations.
Okay. Who else wants to speak? Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the, the long recitation there. I'm sure you had plenty of water tonight, Mr. Mayor. First, I recognize how challenging it is to work in public education and, and certainly the most difficult job there is being the superintendent. And you see that by the, the short tenures that superintendents typically have. And I also, as I did in my, my report, I acknowledge the dedication and hard work by the superintendent with a, a schedule and a, a list of activities that is very, very long, but I, I will express, as I did, that Worcester needs a community-wide collaboration right now to help our students, to help our district, to help our city be much more successful than we are. The concerns I expressed in my annual evaluation here of concerns I've expressed publicly at different meetings or different events. So this shouldn't be much of a surprise there. First, in the management, the operations area, Mr. Chair, you did capture that. I, I will say that I have great respect for the public, Worcester Public Schools fiscal professionals. And my low ranking there on the fiscal systems was not a reflection on them, but rather a reflection going back to the, the process and to the decision around the bidding for the transportation contract. And I still say that that raises serious questions to me about the ethics and the integrity of the process and the system. The way that was handled, the way that was put forward and the decision that was made to go with a company that provided poor service to our students and our families at a much higher rate. I, I question the integrity of the system that has that. Also, as you already covered, question about the Chromebook distribution, the homeschool parents, and just management issues that really shouldn't fall upon the school committee to have to deal with some of those things. They really should be dealt with at the, at the administrative level. But more importantly, the superintendent has to be the leader for the district. Superintendent has to bring all the members of the community, the families, the community groups, the business community, elected officials and everyone together to, in a genuine collaboration to help this district and to help our students move forward. And I appreciate the mayor's comment that the superintendent should look for a communication liaison. But I would, I would make the case that the superintendent is that person. The superintendent is the primary communicator and we need the superintendent to do more and to really embrace all members of our community as we're moving forward. A couple of quick points I'll make, Mr. Chair. And I made it in my, my narrative too, but the issue of institutional bias and racism was an opportunity for the district to engage in real, genuine dialogue, to look at some real professional development and to look at change rather than having a confrontation with no winners. And that's what really happened in that dialogue, nobody won. Our, our student representative, I mean, the best comment of the night, when he commented that nobody is winning here, that there are no winners. And when you have that kind of confrontation, as opposed to stepping back and really, really embracing that kind of conversation as difficult as it might be. But to really look at moving forward and to bring change into the district. Too often I've been hearing from community organizations and the business community about collaborative efforts to work in the public schools that have failed. And they have failed due to the issues of control and a lack of sharing of data and authority. We have to be willing to give up some of our power in the school district to bring other partners in, other members in to really collaborate with us and be successful. I, I would really, as I, in my last comment, I asked the superintendent to really focus on standard three for next year, to really look at family and community engagement and come back next year with substantive improvements, with successful collaboration, with effective engagement and real shared collaboration, because we have to have that in order for us to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough. We lose Mr. McCullough. Okay, did we, we'll come back. Anybody else want to speak? Sorry, Molly, you have to try again. Anybody else want to speak? Mr. Novak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to make a motion that we release the, the individual evaluations as well. And I do that out of respect for the process. Any remark, any marks that were exemplary, needs improvement or unsatisfactory by state regulation have to be backed with comment. Do we? Wait, there we go. Okay.
Yeah.
So. If, if we could release the individual evaluations, because they are actually a requirement. The comments are actually a requirement for any, any marks that are exemplary, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. It seems important for the public process for those to, to be public released and other public documents, but I think they should be publicly released. I thank you for capturing as much as you did in the comments, Mr. Chair. I do think it's incumbent upon, certainly upon me, but upon us as a committee to note that the evaluation of the superintendent, first of all, it's one of our, our main responsibilities. It's written right into the, to chapter seventy-one that talks about the responsibility of the school committee. But secondly, the evaluation of the superintendent actually sets the standard for the rest of the district. And the degree to which we take this seriously, the degree to which we base this on evidence, the degree to which we base this on the experience of all of those we serve is really what makes the difference in terms of whether or not that's something that we take seriously as a system. And the degree to which we do that then sets the standard for the rest of the district. You had captured, Mr. Chair, my, my general evaluator comments of the overriding themes. Certainly being the administrative capacity around management and then the district climate for staff and for students. I think that we're seeing that again in some of the public commentary that's happening even now, that's expanded over the last week. I do want to note two things in terms of the district improvement goals. There, the, the degree to which we can give any grade on a district technology plan, given what the catastrophe that happened this spring. I, I think it's just a question of whether or not we were, you know, we're paying attention to what actually happened here in terms of our, our grade there. And then the staff recruitment and retention, I appreciate some of the comments that some of my colleagues made. I do think it's important for us to actually ask the question of where the data is. How many of, of different kinds of candidates are we hiring and are they being retained? We can only decide that based on actual data. I do want to warn my colleagues of the tradition of organizations hiring a chief diversity officer, giving them limited purview as we have in Worcester. And then with them receiving little to no backing, them essentially being marked a failure. And while I have great respect for Ms. Perez, I fear that we have set her up for the same thing again here. I won't go into all of this, but I do think that when we talk about things like district culture and district management, we need to be talking about a district culture shift. And that's something that is first set by the school committee and then is, is communicated from the superintendent down into the rest of the staff. Among, by the way, some of the, the things that people should be aware of is the degree to which they actually can take critique. And as has already been mentioned, that's something that's a bit of an issue for this administration. If you can't actually find, take critique and then improve, it's hard to see what kind of an educational system we're running, since that's actually entirely what learning is based on. I agree with Mr. Foley's critique of the transportation contract. I wasn't on the committee at the time, but regard, still regard that aghast. It appears that mostly what we're doing is supporting the bottom line of an internal community. And I had also mentioned the degree to which grant oversight was an issue, as you, as you pointed out. Something though, that I am particularly concerned about, you had pulled out the question of the degree to which we believe the voices of students. And our students have told us again and again, last year, this year, they're telling us now that they don't feel respected and they don't feel safe and they don't feel appreciated for who they actually are in Worcester Public Schools. And that's not something that we can make go away by telling them to talk to their principals or essentially kind of patting them on the head. The, I, I was in a, a session earlier this year, Mr. Chair, where a student said, would you want to go to school where you didn't feel welcome? And we have children who do. And that's our problem, that's on us. If we're not being equitable in how we deal with families, and too often we're not, and we're not being thoughtful and respectful of how we deal with staff who are different and not tolerating microaggression or anti-bias actions, then we're not actually fixing things. The degree to which there's a systemic sense of fear and lack of support in the Worcester Public Schools right now is extraordinarily troubling to me as a member of the school committee. And until that's actually taken seriously first by my colleagues here, but certainly by the superintendent, we can't fix that. And that is a terrible thing to say about an educational system. If our staff is in fear and doesn't feel respected, how is it that we can create a, a comfortable and comforting place for children to be learning? So I am, I am troubled this evening, Mr. Chair. But again, I would appreciate it if we could release all of everyone's individual critiques this evening, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This being career.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate it. I know it was a lot of work to summarize everything. I certainly am open to having all of the information and all of the points that we had on the evaluation, open to the public, more than happy to see that occur. So people will clearly understand the remarks and what the evaluation consists of. I do want to thank the superintendent for her hard work. I also want to thank the staff for joining in in what we consider this pandemic since March. However, I do want to make a couple of remarks on what we as a school committee look at. When we talked about the transportation issue that's been brought up a couple of times tonight, we discussed the responsibilities of not only running our own transportation company, but also what Durham had to offer. Is it expensive? It's expensive whether we run it ourselves or not. But let me tell you, there's not a day since March that I ever sat back and said, gee, I wish we were running our own bus company. We have so many things to look at, so many things to discuss and so much of a responsibility that we bring forward. And I am so proud that when we look at what our team consists of, it can consist of a mayor who cares, a superintendent who cares and is concerned, and a city manager who's willing to sit down and take a look at how we're moving forward. We're, we are not alone in this and we haven't been alone for a few years now. I, I think of it as a team moving forward. And I like to look at our schools as a team. When we talk about what we're doing and how we're going in the right direction in this evaluation is just a small piece of what we move forward with. Such as any evaluation for anyone in their workplace. The one thing I do want to note before I conclude on this is the fact that over the last few weeks, I have seen report after report on, from the superintendent in her administration that is amazing at every scale. We look at safety as a priority, which it has to be. We also are looking at what we're doing in communication. What you did with Maki as far as communicating, getting it done, not having to worry about what we're going to do with our students in the internet. Kudos. I mean, that, that's terrific. I don't see any other city or town in Massachusetts being able to do that. With all of that said, we did an evaluation on someone who had entered into a crisis that no one ever imagined. Let's just say we had many community meetings to discuss our budget. No one has a budget like Worcester has a budget. We are the example of what other communities would like to have for a budget. When we look at how we came on board with the city when they were looking for protective equipment and we were willing as a school department to open our doors and find out what we had, we did what we needed to do. That's a team. That's bringing people together. Our teachers have been there for our students. Is it challenging? Absolutely. We would not be the city we are if we didn't have the challenges that we have. But when we move forward, we are moving forward in a good direction, the right direction. We have much professional development that our staff will be looking at. And it begins at the end of August. But right now, when we're looking at the middle of summer, I don't think anyone has rested easily. And I don't think anyone is sitting on their laurels. And as far as how we go in our direction as Worcester Public Schools, I stay strong and proud and thank them. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. And I just also would like to thank you for compiling this presentation. At first, I would like to thank Madam Superintendent and her staff. As we know, the school year did not end in a way that any of us imagined it to, but this team continues to work very hard and they're paying attention to details that a lot of us weren't even thinking about. And that those detail, the details in the plans that are coming out for the fall are evident of their hard work. But as a new school committee member, I had to base my evaluation on eight months of this school year and five months of that feedback was based on work done during the pandemic. And as I do agree with some of my other school committee members, I think communication was an area that we need to make sure that we improve upon. I also know that we need to keep the dialogue open and we need to be transparent in our data and share our data. Because we have seen that when we're not sharing our data, people are getting, are not getting the facts and we need to make sure that we are in front of this and that people get solid information from us. Like I said, I would also like to see major continuation with communication with families and our staff. There was a lot of communication, miscommunication when we closed down our buildings. And although I do see a change over the summer and I see things getting better, I think the community forums were very important to be held And although I do see a change over the summer and I see things getting better, I think the community forums were very important to be held to get people on the same page. I think that we need to continue doing that. And we need to, we're going to have to continue to do that even as school begins throughout the fall to keep families and community members engaged and listening to what is going on. And I know that you and your team have been dealt with an incredible task with getting our students and staff back into the classes, whatever that may look like. And like I said, I do ask that you keep communicating and updating us as community members, the families and staff, and our community partners. And again, and I thank you. And I do look forward to continuing the work as we move our district forward. Thank you.
And just like to thank you, administration, Mr. Nenda, superintendent, for doing this process to go through. And have my support to continue the benefits of this district. I think we just have to work on some data sharing. And also involve the community more. I'd like to see that, as I mentioned already. And I want to give the administration probably like an A+ for the last couple of months. And we might, we might disagree at the end of the day, having open schools. But I think the communication, as Mr. Foley pointed out, has been pretty good. With both the school committee and the community. I know people, there's no easy answer to what we're doing. But if we're communicating, working together and being transparent with the public, which we have been, and getting more into the community, especially the communities of politics, I think sometimes, like I think Mr. Brokaw pointed out, it's a communication issue, trying to get to everybody, which is hard. We have 25,000 students, but we need to improve on that, I think. One of the comments he had made earlier was during a nationwide discourse about race, ethnicity, inequity, there's call even for improvement. For generations, we have thought equality, same with everyone. With equity, with equality comes expression of inequities, income, race, ethnicity, and of casual or overt sexism, wanting to guise the most qualified candidate. I was proud, in my comments, I was also proud to work with the superintendent to fight equal education funding allowance for schools. Superintendent, it should be pointed out, involve the community meeting, she had been outside of this. And in Boston, with us, school committee members, we still record zero live, and I think a lot of school committees, they're fighting for additional monies, which unfortunately, we saw. With the pandemic, it's going to be a challenging time for the budget year. But I think we're all working together, on the same page. I think this is going to work out well. Any other comments? Then, Mr. Foley, you all said, it's like, okay, okay. Ms. Penander? Madam Superintendent, can you?
Yes, okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank the school committee for this comprehensive evaluation. I have enjoyed, I think it's been a unique year, I'm sure, as many of you have said. I do think that we've made a lot of progress with our work on culture responsive practices and our resilience training and our work for collaborative problem solving. We are going to continue to expand that. As you know, we've already seen some changes in the first year, but effective progress, sometimes the best effective progress is slow. In order for a culture to build, you wouldn't expect the culture to completely turn in one year. My concern with that would be it really wasn't getting to be an effective culture. So we'll continue with that work and reach out to the community. I have to say that the work with the pandemic really has had us, not only the district office and myself, but principals and teachers really appreciate the work that we can do with families. As I had said to the faculties as I visited their meetings, is that families let us into their homes. So we were literally at their kitchen tables. And sometimes there were parents learning right next to their, to their child. And that was really something to allow them to have a trust with us, to allow us into their homes and to have those conversations. So we want to continue to have those same feelings and to work so that every family does feel that they are appreciated in the Worcester Public Schools. I also have to say that I've really enjoyed our work together. I don't know if the public knows, but the school committee and superintendent, myself and district leadership have been meeting often, informally, during the last month, especially as we really work together, as really thought partners, trying to find a solution to this very big challenge of reopening a school system with not even known about, sorry, the virus and not really knowing about the definite of the budget. So there were a lot of moving parts. And I really did enjoy having, and sort of my team, that communication together. So I do think the mayor saying that people have to work together, I think that is the answer. And I really look forward to problem solving, continue to problem solve together with school committee. On the issue of my administrative team, I want to say that they're amazing. They, it's been a unique year for them, too. Every challenge that came up, they worked solid. So we're a very strong, talented team. We want to move together forward. We also have a very strong school-based leadership team, our principals. We have a very strong faculty. And they all work together because they love our students and families. And they want to make education the most effective for all of them. So I understand that there are some things we worked on, but I have to say that I think that we're a strong team. I think that we've been successful in a lot of areas. And like, like any position, there are things that we have to work to improve. And I think it's important that everyone in the school committee work with us to also help us improve. Because I think we're good partners and we want to continue to have that collaboration that we have had this summer as we go forward, so that we're able to make those changes that are going to make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. I look forward, I think the school committee looks forward to that partnership with you and your administration. We've worked hard over the last three months. And I know we have a lot more work to do. Child waters, but we just have to make sure that we have systems in place and making sure these kids are getting the rigorous education and the assistance in place to make sure that's happening. There's online learnings need to everybody. We just have to make sure that works positively. We do have a school committee meeting tomorrow night, Mr. Nenda, right? And we're going to discuss the buildings.
Yes.
A week from Thursday, I think it's still a week from Thursday. Let's change for the next few days. School committee will be taking a vote on how we want to handle the opening of the school. Correct?
Yes. And could we also mention that next Tuesday, we're going to be having a Spanish forum. That will be presenting our plan to the Spanish community. And that information is on our website and it is also their flyers. And we really want everyone to understand and be part of the conversation regarding reopening.
Mr. Chair? Just a quick question, if I could, just on process next, you know, after we accept the report or approve the report tonight, is that then going to go to a subcommittee for work on the goals or write to the superintendent for goals for the year? And what's the timeline for that, so we can reflect upon how those goals might have been influenced by the evaluation?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're going to do the goals. And I think that we're probably a few weeks behind on that. So we had to figure out how to proceed on the goals. And I think the best thing is probably send that to the best school committee, the education.
If it goes to subcommittee, it's probably governance, but it could also come back to the full committee as well. I think either way, it would be fine.
I think we should start with small debate, because I think some of this is subject to negotiations, too. So we go to governance. So it would be to refer to governance and also review the goals and present it back to the full school committee. And also as part of the motions to release the individual evaluations of the school committee members, if that has part of that, too. Roll call.
Ms. Bianca Keria? Yes. Mrs. Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, our next thing is the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues met virtually on Wednesday, July 22, 7:00 PM, 4:10 at the Turcan Building. So we have a report.
I can go. I couldn't hear you.
I'm starting. You're up.
Okay, thank you.
It's hard to hear you.
Yeah, I got it now. Yeah, so the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues met virtually on Wednesday, July 22, 2020. Present was myself, Chairman Clancy, Vice Chairman Monfrido, Ms. Novick. Representing administration was Dr. Friou, Ms. Boulay, Dr. O'Neil, Ms. Perez, and Superintendent Penandah. Also in attendance was Mr. Walton. So we first took up GB 0-223, and it was to consider amendments to the current student dress code policy, which would be included in the new student handbook and policy manual for the next school year. Vice Chairman Monfrido stated that he is in favor of a gender-neutral dress code policy for students. Ms. Novick stated that it was a step forward to include durags, but felt that due to the current climate in which we are living, the proposed policy is a waste of teachers' time. She also referenced the Seattle Public Schools Dress Code Policy as being one of the most inclusive and free of bias policies that is attached on the next page. She also shared and read the policy, which she felt was more appropriate. And she also said that it was one of the issues that she heard most from students and families was that the amount of time and attention spent on policing students. Ms. Novick proposed striking everything from the proposed Worcester Public School Dress Code Policy, beginning with the district's core values and replacing it with the following, which was the Seattle Public School Dress Code Policy. Then we continued on to page four after the complete policy. Vice Chairman Monfrido voiced his concern that there was the first time that the Seattle policy was seen and that the special subcommittee had already submitted, sorry, that already submitted their proposed policy in which to go forward. He proposed that the current policy be voted on and the Seattle policy be taken to, back to the special subcommittee for discussion. Myself, Chairman Clancy stated that I was also, that I had also researched other school districts' policies and was concerned about this section, particularly in the Worcester Public School policy that states that the school principals have discretion to render judgment possibly creating reasons for conflict and that it may not be consistent across the district. I also agreed with Vice Chairman Monfrido that others should weigh in on this before making a decision. We also opened up for public comment. We first got Betsabey Vasquez, Antonio Manu McCarthy, Helen Kennedy, Molly Roach, and Diana spoke to their concerns with the current policy, which included, but was not limited to, durags, hoods, victim blaming, racial profiling, and religious headwear. Superintendent did make it clear that principals should be in charge of their school buildings. And the issue with students wearing hoods was the inability for principals to recognize who is in the building. Ms. Novick suggested inviting the members of the subcommittee to the next meeting and also to invite students, parents, staff to be part of the discussion. I, Chairman Clancy, made the following motion to approve the, to approve the proposed dress code policy. On a roll call two to one, name was Ms. Novick, the motion was approved. I also made the following motion to hold the item and bring it, to hold the item in subcommittee and bring the proposed Seattle Dress Code Policy and other policies back to the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues for further discussion. On a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. We also took up the next item, which is 0-230, which is to consider the approval of the proposed 2020-2021 School Handbook of the Worcester Public Schools. I read, I read each of the proposed student changes and the amendments were made to the proposed changes. They follow on the bottom of page five and continue on to page six. Ms. Novick then suggested the following proposed amendments be discussed with the legal department. Number two on page five, voluntary transfer information needs to be deleted. She would, we also, she also recommended insert the conduct code, the code of conduct section, which is pages currently 38 to 48, and move that to before the legal policies section, which is on page 16. She also noted new guidance for Title IX and reporting of sexual harassment and other Title IX infractions. It should be noted that the legal, that if the legal department approves the above three issues, they can be deleted from the handbook. Myself, Chairman Clancy, asked the following questions. If the word certified male should remove from the entire handbook, not just on page 20, since that was just noted to remove it from page 20. And then I had a question regarding suspension for 10 days with manifestation determination meetings on when those should be held. Ms. Novick suggested that, that there is a place in the handbook informing students what to do in order to change their name and gender identification. She recommended the following language be added to page 36, which is under the student records, line five, amending student records to say, "In accordance with the Department of Elementary Secondary Education's assigning state-assigned student identifiers to Massachusetts public students, public school students, district and name records are to reflect the student-stated name and pronouns. Nothing more formal than usage is required consistent with the statutory standard." Ms. Novick also requested that the word expulsion be stricken throughout the handbook. Also, under code of conduct, Ms. Novick believes that Rule 19 under extracurricular activity, page 45, should be moved to the top of the section under athletes and participants in school-related activities, which is on page 48. Ms. Novick also asked if the district still uses Carnegie units, athletes and participants, under the athletes and participants in school-related activities on page 48. Ms. Novick stated that the description of CPAC, I believe it's SPEDPAC and LPAC, are not reflective on Mass General Law's Chapter 71A and B. For CPAC, the suggestion quoting the following citing Chapter 71B, Section 3, "The parent advisory council duties shall include, but not limited to, advising the school committee in matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in planning, development, and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs." For the LPAC quoting Chapter 71A, Section 6A, "The duties of the council shall include, but not limited to, advising the school district, school committee, and board of trustees on matters that pertain to English learners, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning and development of programs designed to improve educational opportunities for English learners, and participating in the review of school improvement plans." Myself, Chairman Clancy, made the following motion to approve the amendments to the 2020-2021 School Handbook, Student Handbook. On a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. Myself, Chairman Clancy, also made the following motion to approve the 2021 Student Handbook as amended. And on a roll call of three to one, the motion was approved. And on a roll call three to, three to zero, the meeting was adjourned. And that was it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I did.
Good job, Mrs. Glancy.
Thank you.
Ms. Bianca Keria?
Thank you. I was in the, in attendance in the Zooms for that.
Okay, could you mark that?
If we could mark that in the notes, please, because I was certainly listening to what occurred in the statements that were made.
Sorry, Diana.
That's okay. It's okay. Welcome to Zoom. No problem.
I think yours is probably too quiet.
I was quiet.
Okay, so we will, as amended, approve the governance committee's report. Roll call.
Ms. Bianca Keria? Yes. Mrs. Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfrido?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we're on general business. The step to donation of warehouse space for storage of personal protective equipment to Chatsworth property used by the district for 2021. used by the district for 2021 uh, school year. Want to uh, thank the Chatsmorey Properties, Mr. Chatsmorey and the family for doing that. Uh, it's much appreciated. So, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, I think we're on, my pages might be messed up. We're on all 240.
That's correct.
Uh, to consider approval of a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $29 made payable to the uh, Language Testing International. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Administration accepting uh, mass libraries is actually amount of $3,500. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Uh, 242, authorize administration into agreement for the lease and space for five years for creation of a dual language school. Um, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
I don't want to speak to it, but I, I suspect that this is probably the first that some people are hearing of it. I wondered if the superintendent wanted to very briefly talk, not at great length, but just so, so we're not sort of springing this on people.
Madam Superintendent, maybe break the call so we understand.
So, so this, uh, we're really interested in starting a dual language school in the Worcester Public Schools. Uh, for the last couple of years, we've been trying to look for, you know, how we could maybe combine current schools that have lower attendance and it just uh, weren't able to do that. So when Saint, Saint Steedens became available, uh, we uh, really want to pursue it. And uh, we also had this year a large number of applications for the dual language program for kindergartners. Uh, and because we value bilingual, bilingualcy and uh, we really want, we really believe that our students should speak more than one language proficiently, especially for the global economy that they're all going to be living in as they, you know, get older. That uh, we really, we really need some dual language schools. So this is a great building. Um, it has 18 classrooms, so we would be able to really build a really strong uh, kindergarten to basic dual language program there. So this uh, request here is so that we could implement a RFP so that uh, we would be able to create this year, the dual language program and then actually open up for a dual language school in the Worcester Public Schools.
Good job. Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
I, quick, quick comment on this?
Okay, quick.
Thank you. I just want to say that I congratulate everyone who worked on this. Um, even during a pandemic where we're looking at different avenues that will benefit our students. Kudos to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Consider you approve the updated 2021 school calendar. This might be updated again. We roll call this?
Yes. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Ms. Novick?
Yes, um, likewise, uh, um, there's obviously, we sort of saw headlines and so forth around the state's waiver around time on learning and so forth. Um, is it possible for the superintendent just to give us a little bit of information about how those um, initial, initial days with staff are intended to be used? I realize some of this is subject to um, decisions next week, but just to give some, people some idea of how the time would be used, please?
Mm-hmm.
To the chair.
Thank you. I was hoping that I could explain this. Alright, so uh, on the regular calendar, we normally only have two professional development days before school starts. Uh, so those things will stay August 27th and 28th. Listen up, I think every school district, 10 additional days are for professional development and brought the school year down to 170 student days. So we'll be using 12, which is amazing that we're going to have that much time to train staff. There'll be a combination of safety training, uh, to know about COVID, about uh, the, the guidance that's sent by DESI uh, regarding classrooms, uh, separation of desks by six feet. If somebody does get COVID in your classroom, what's the procedure? Uh, information about, you know, the monitoring of bathrooms, seating rates, classes and in classrooms. So all that type of information will be provided along with training on how to use technology. Technology training, because every teacher's gonna have to have Google Classroom. So uh, most, the, thanks to our work last spring, most students do not use Google Classroom. Uh, we are actually getting resources and everybody's Google Classroom tying it to the standards. So they have to learn about um, what that process is and have access to it. And then we are planning to let each school have five of the 12 days. That'll be site-based, that'll be working with the principal, uh, so that uh, each faculty and uh, each principal will be able to get them ready for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Okay, so we, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Hook someone, my thoughts?
Yes. All 244.
44 to 24. In the amount of $34 for double honor. Fourth, made payable. Just, okay, roll call.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Then we have executive session none. I guess we can adjourn. Okay? So tomorrow night at 5:30, uh, we'll be meeting. 5:30 tomorrow night, everyone's motion is to adjourn. Thank you, uh, Madam Superintendent, thank you all, thank you staff. We want to follow their hard work to conduct it. So uh, roll call, we adjourn.
Ms. Biancaria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Montfredo?
Yes.
Ms. Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Thank you.